Okay, the City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, chapter 40A and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary will read the legal notice or state that such a notice has been waived. All applications tonight will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the chair. That means whatever is on the agenda, that is the order we're taking tonight. The petition or petitioner's representative will present the subject application to the board. The chair may limit the length of all remarks. All parties and interests will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition to a pending application, and the board may receive similar written communications to be placed on the public record. The petitioner will then be given the opportunity to refute any such remarks. Now I'm going to stop and I'm going to say this to you so you completely understand it because I think I might have lost some of you in the explanation. So, when it's your turn to come up to the podium, you'll come up, you'll state your name, put the microphone on, the little red light will come on, you'll state your name and address for the record, and then you or your builder or your attorney will state why you're here. Now, we're all here for dimensional relief. You need a variance because you do not meet the correct footage needed for an addition, a porch, or whatever, and you need to tell us the reasons why you need that. And things that we don't, it's not that we don't care about you, we care about every one of you, but we don't really need to know what you do for a living, how long you've lived in Peabody, that you can't stand your neighbors and all the reasons why, or why you love your neighbors and all the reasons why. You know, you're here for dimensional relief. It seems that when you get to the microphone, you really want to tell us a lot of extraneous information which we really don't need. All that personal stuff, keep it. If you start, I'll probably do one of these, try to be very polite to say, you know, it's not necessary. We need to keep to the subject, and once you're done speaking, we then will ask you questions. And then we will say, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Raise your hand, one by one, come up to the podium, give us a brief explanation on how much you love this neighbor and what a wonderful addition to the neighborhood a farmer's porch would be to his house. Fine, then you can sit down. Then I will say, is anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? And here's where it gets really interesting. Because many people would like to speak in opposition, it just happens, it's just the way it happens. So, you will come up to the podium, one by one, state your name and address for the record. There have been times when we've had 15 people that would like to speak in opposition, and that's great, everybody will have a chance to speak. However, if the first seven people say everything that you want to say, there's no need to reiterate it, come up to the podium, name and address for the record, and you can just say, "I agree with the first seven neighbors," and you'll still get credit for it, okay? And once again, we don't want to know how loud they keep their radio on, how many dogs they have that bark through the night, that's not in opposition. You're in opposition to what they want to build, too close to your property, and why. Once that's done, you go back to your seat, we might be able to ask a few, we will be able to ask if we need to, a few more questions. Also, at that point, you, the petitioner, or your representative can come back up to the microphone and address some of the problems that maybe your neighbors might have had. Let me just say for the record, the best and the most efficient petitions are ones where you have already gone to your neighbors, shown them what you want to build, explain that to them, so there's really not too much question on what's going on. We get many people come up here, neighbors come up and say, "They're my neighbor, I had no idea what they were doing." And that's just a little piece of information. Once you're back in your seat, please don't speak from your seat. I know that there are times when things might get a little heated and you forgot to say something, just raise your hand, you can come back up, but please don't shout anything from your seat, it happens all the time. At that time, we take a vote for and against, we are a very fair board. I don't care what anybody says, go to another city, go to another town, we are a very fair board. However, there are rules and regulations and laws, zoning laws, that have to be abided by, no matter what, no matter who you are. And not everything gets approved, and if that happens, I'm very sorry, but you just asked for the sun, the moon, and the stars, and we just couldn't do it. That's why we have zoning boards, that's why we have laws. If that is the case, there is a 20-day appeal period, which I'll read in a minute, that you are, that's your jurisdiction if you feel like appealing the decision, but at any rate, that's about it in a nutshell. So, the decision, once a decision is decided by the board, the decision will be typed and filed with the city clerk. Once the decision is filed with the city clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period, and our clerk, Ms. Carla McGrath, can explain all of that to you if you need it explained. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded by our clerk. When you're at the microphone, please speak directly and clearly so that we can assure everything you say is on the record. Cell phone videotaping is not permitted without first notifying the commissioner of the ZBA board. The commissioner must then announce videotaping is occurring, and it may no way be disruptive. We are on Channel 9, and we also streamed live on Facebook and YouTube, so why anybody would want to videotape us on their phone, I have no idea. All meeting minutes are made public, and any new applications, informations, plot plans, rendering, anything else that is brand-new cannot be passed in tonight. Everything that you had, needed to be passed in, should have already been passed in before this evening. And we can begin. I was going to ask if there's any questions, but then you'd have to talk from your seat, and you know that's not allowed. So, we have number one, Ryan Sundquist.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16th, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Ryan Sundquist for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 5 Dartmouth Street, Peabody, map 49, lot 59. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow for an open deck and requires relief from the rear yard setback where 35 feet are required and 11.3 feet are proposed to the right side yard where 20 feet are required and 13.1 feet are proposed. This property is located in an R1B zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and Board of Appeals office, City Hall, in advance and just prior to the public
Hello, I'm Ryan Sundquist from 5 Dartmouth Street, Peabody. I am looking for a variance on a deck, an addition to a deck, from a current deck that I have, step down to attach to my pool. Yeah, I'm looking for it because, for outdoor entertainment space.
Let me see if I can make this a little easier for you. So, you have the house, and you have the above-ground pool, and you have a deck already, and you just want to attach it to the pool?
Yes, in addition to the deck, the lower deck would be an add-on.
Seems to be the thing to do this year, I guess, we've had quite a few of these.
Just looking at the plan, where does the existing deck end? Is that that first part of the rectangle or just so?
Yes, the first top part of the deck is existing.
Okay, and then you said it will step down?
Step down, and then yes, it will attach to the pool.
Okay, so there'll be direct access from that deck to the pool?
Correct.
Okay, well, you plan to have that, I assume, fenced in with a locking gate and all that stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
You sure?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, comments?
I mean, the pool is what kills them, because it comes from the outside and matters off of that.
Anybody from the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? Hearing none, the matter is before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Dan?
Yes.
Julie? Ed?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Number two is the funeral home.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16th, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Conway Cahill Broder Funeral Home, LLC, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2018 as amended section 715, accessory structure, as it applies to the premises known as 82 Lynn Street, Peabody, map 109, lot 239. Petitioner is proposing a detached garage and needs relief to the accessory structure square footage where 1872 square feet are proposed and 500 square feet are permitted. Property is located in a BN zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and Board of Appeals office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. The application and plot plan will also be available at the time of the public hearing.
Thank you. My name is David Anklees. I practice law at 246 Andover Street, Unit 101, and I represent the applicant in this matter. As you can tell from the application, the petitioner obtained a special permit on December 14, 2000, to create a funeral establishment at 82 Lynn Street. At that time, the petitioner was unable to construct a proposed garage due to economic and time constraints. The proposed garage is intended to house the vehicles used in connection with the operation of the funeral home. It will house a hearse, a flower car, and the limousines normally used and owned by the petitioner. They are essential to the operation of the funeral home and have always been an integral part of a funeral establishment. It will make the vehicles available in adverse weather conditions and provide protection from the elements in the winter. Not to have the vehicles readily available has created a hardship and inconvenience for the operation of the funeral home at times, and inconvenience for the families that have been customers and their, and others associated with the family. I don't believe that it was, that that situation was anticipated when the original special permit was granted. The garage itself will be built to match the style and the appearance of the existing home. It will also be in harmony with the existing home's architecture and will still leave well over 90, the last time I counted, well over 90 parking spaces available. It will meet all side, front, and rear yard setback requirements, it will not exceed the height requirement in the area, it will allow for police and fire access, and we've checked with the fire department regarding turning radiuses, access and egress. As an accessory building in a neighborhood business zone, it's limited to 500 square feet, and the garage is 1872 square feet resulting in this request. I have attached to our application an architect's plan, drawings, elevations, and I think you'll see that the style and proposed construction are, again, well tasteful and are in harmony with the existing structure. I think if you take a look at the architect's plan, which is certified by the architect, it contains an elevation for the garage, it shows you how the six vehicles lay out in the garage, it gives you a side elevation, it gives you the site plan, shows you the large, large number of parking spaces available, so I, in all respects, I believe that this is in harmony with the neighborhood, it's in harmony, which by the way is a neighborhood business zone, and it serves the neighborhood well, it serves the community well, and I believe is in conformance with what our ordinance requested. Thank you.
Well, it is a very nice plan.
Thank you.
Looks very nice.
I mean, just through the chair, I don't have any questions, I just think it's, because we've had some very large accessory structures come before us in the last few months, I just think it's worth noting for the record that since this isn't a business district and since this was a special permit that came through years ago, that I don't see any problem with the size of it, given the nature of it, as opposed to a normal residential garage.
I was actually there today, and I unfortunately know the property very well, and I can understand why you would need garages, the Conway family would need garages for their vehicles and equipment, and it totally makes sense to me. I don't see where it's going in that far corner of the parking lot where it's going to be a problem to any neighbors, anything of that nature with the trees that are in the immediate area, and I'm personally okay with it, no problem at all.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? Hearing none, the matter is before the board.
Motion to approve?
Close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set.
Thank you.
Three, Danielle Vautour.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16th, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Danielle Vautour for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2018 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 35 Trash Road, Peabody, map 60, lot 85. Petitioner needs relief to the right side yard where eight plus or minus feet are proposed and 20 feet are required. This property is located in our 1B zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and Board of Appeals office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. The application and plot plan will also be available at the time of the public hearing.
Hi there, my name is Danielle Vautour, formerly Danielle Duquette of 35 Trash Road. My husband Dennis and I are here today to request a variance approval for our Campanelli Ranch to add a mechanical room to the side of our house. The current edge of our house is 20 feet from the side yard, and any changes would need a variance of approval. We're looking to build the room eight feet off the house to ensure proper distance is provided between the proposed furnace and oil tank that we're building. In May, we came home to find our furnace producing soot when we turned it on with no heat, hot water generation, and the inability to be fixed by our heating company. Living in a Campanelli home, our furnace is located in our kitchen, causing us concern with the smell of oil, recent soot generation, and potential release of carbon monoxide on the same level we live in every day. Additionally, with the oil tank being outside our house, there's always concern of oil freezing in the winter. The current furnace location is not safe, and we wish to build the mechanical room on the side of our house for the furnace, oil tank, and hot water heater. We wish to build this room on the side of the house, as this has been done with other neighbors in our neighborhood. More than half of our neighbors actually have done it this way. We have spoken to a few of our neighbors, and they've discussed how this setup works well for them. We're using the neighborhood, neighboring houses, as inspiration to draw our designs for the room from. This setup would allow us the least amount of disruption for our current oil pipes in the house, and this also allows us to have a healthy living quarters and setup that is not conclusive to healthy conditions currently. At this point, we've installed a temporary hot water solution, but we do not have any heat in our house. With the cold months fast approaching and the arrival of our first child in 10 weeks, we're hoping this variance can be approved by the board so we can move forward building the permits and the plans in time to get the heat.
So, I'm familiar with the Campanelli heater in the kitchen thing, and so that's no longer in your kitchen, that whole thing has been removed?
Yes.
Yeah, that's something to put up with. This is a great solution. Well, we don't have any questions for you. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? See, this wasn't so difficult, was it?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set. Number four is Robert Dunn.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16th, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Robert Dunn for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 4 Roycroft Road, Peabody, map 65, lot 278. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow for an addition and requires relief from the rear yard setback where 35 feet are required and 33 feet are proposed. Property is located in our 1A zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and Board of Appeals office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public
Yes, I'm Robert Dunn from 4 Roycroft Road, and I'm seeking to have an addition of 10 feet wide by eight feet deep put on the back of my property, and the required clearance is 35 feet from the boundary, and I only have 33 feet, and that's the reason
Through the chair. I assume the reason why there's a rock wall for the driveway, there's an elevation change, I assume?
Very steep.
Okay. Through the chair again.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, never mind, I'm looking at the wrong picture.
Still quiet here tonight. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Moving right along, the matter is before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, sir. Five is Craig and Rachel Childress. Childress?
Childress?
Children.
At least the football coach was Childress. Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16th, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Craig and Rachel Childress for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 7 Longwood Ave., Peabody, Mass., map 124, lot 168. This petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the side yard where 15 feet are required and three plus or minus feet are proposed to the rear yard where 35 feet are required and 18 feet are proposed. This property is located in our 1A zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and Board of Appeals office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public
Thank you. I am Rachel Childress, and this is my husband Craig of 7 Longwood Ave., and we are here requesting a variance from the rear and the side in order to build an addition to accommodate our growing family. We just had a baby in January and are anticipating, my mother-in-law also needing a bedroom in the near future. We chose the location in our yard because it made the most sense practically as far as the house setup would go, and really anywhere else that we would build would require a
Through the chair. You mentioned anticipating your mother-in-law to have a bedroom, would that be to temporarily sleepover, or were you looking for her to move in at some point?
She would be moving in. Craig's dad is quite ill, he's older and quite ill, and so she would wind up moving in with us permanently.
Okay, have you applied for what we call a fela or fala?
No, it wouldn't be like an in-law apartment, it would just be her living with us.
That's very nice. Any other questions? That's pretty good.
Through the chair. I'm just looking at this picture here with that big wall, I can't figure out where on the property that is.
That's on the street, that's the front side looking at the house from the street level.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none, the matter is before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve?
Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Julie? Ed?
Yes.
Steven? Brad?
You're all set. Thank you. I'm not used to your voice. Number six, David Richard.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16th, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of David Richard for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 29 County Street, Peabody, map 109, lot 103. Petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the left side yard where 10 feet are required and five plus or minus feet are proposed. This property is located in our 2 zoning district. The application and plan are also available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and Board of Appeals office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing.
Hello, I'm David Richard and my wife Amy, 29 County Street. We're looking for relief from my neighbor's property to build a deck for our backyard.
Relief from your neighbor's property?
Relief, whatever it is, and you know, I'm too close, I guess.
So, you need, you need? Relief on your property?
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none, the matter is before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve?
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set.
Thank you.
Seven is Austin Keough.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16th, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Austin Keough for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 11 Elaine Ave., Peabody, Mass., map 124, lot 147. Petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the left side yard where 15 feet are required and four plus or minus feet are proposed. Property is located in our 1A zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and Board of Appeals office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing.
Hello, my name is Austin Keough from 11 Elaine Avenue. I'm seeking a variance on a deck that is 15 feet required, and I'm proposing four. Unfortunately, I face a hardship around my property where there's nowhere that I don't have 15 feet just from the house to the end of the property, so I was hoping to be able to have the deck on that side to be able to give some outdoor space to my family and my elderly mother.
I guess there's, there was some discrepancy about it being a patio versus the deck, the way it was built. Yeah, yeah, I didn't have them attach it to the ground or to the building as well. So that's, but it still was considered a deck by the town, I guess.
This is already built?
Yes. Yeah, there's apparently no definition of a patio. Only the definition of a deck.
Could you just run bias, what you did? Like, what you did? Like?
Sure. Yeah, so I applied for a permit to build the deck. It was denied. I was in, given some advice that I would be able to build it as a patio if it was under 2 feet in height, if it was not attached to the building and not attached to the ground. So I had it built. However, the town of Peabody said that that doesn't exist. There's no such definition for a patio. You built a deck, therefore you have to apply for a variance. And I said, okay, I will do that.
So it was just an honest mistake? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none, the matter is before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion to approve.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
For eight, Bruce and Noreen Garland.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street. Petee on the application of Bruce and Noreen Garland, care of attorney Arvinidis, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2018 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 41 Beacon Boulevard, Peabody, map 108, lot 192X. Petitioners proposing the subdivision of their lot and requires relief to the proposed Lot A lot area where 15,000 square feet are required and 75, 60 plus or minus square feet are proposed. Lot frontage where 125 feet are required and 85 plus or minus feet proposed. Lot width where 93.7 feet are required, 85 plus or minus feet are proposed. Minimum buildable lot width where 60 feet are required, 55 plus or minus feet are proposed. Minimum buildable lot depth where 40 feet are required and 34 plus or minus feet are proposed. This property is located in our 1A zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. The application and plot plan will also be available at the time of the public hearing.
I'm chairperson, members of the board. My name is Peter Arvinidis, and I'm a practicing attorney here in Peabody with an office at 7 Essex Green Drive. I'm representing tonight Bruce and Noreen Garland, the petitioners who own property at 41 Beacon Boulevard in Peabody. And they are seeking to subdivide a lot which they own, which consists of about 26,800 square feet, and is a conglomeration of seven lots from a 1907 plan. And I think I included a copy of that plan with the application, and also included a copy of a portion of the assessors map entitled Beacon Boulevard Neighborhood, which depicts a number of other lots in the area, many of which are developed with single-family homes currently. The reason that the Garlands are seeking the variances to enable them to create a separate lot of 7,560 square feet and ultimately convey that to a child of theirs for hopefully building a home on it to be next, near them when they get older and have grandchildren with them, and they just want to do the things that parents and grandparents want to do together with their family members. The variances requested are, as the petition states, for area frontage. And I will say that in terms of the setbacks, the lot sought to be created meets all of the setbacks, and at least from the standpoint of maintaining the distance from the neighboring properties, it accomplishes that. The other variances requested are minimum buildable lot width, minimum buildable lot depth, and lot width generally. The vast majority of the other lots in this neighborhood situated, and developed lots, are situated on lots of approximately 4,000 to 5,000 square feet. One of the purposes stated in the zoning bylaw for a variance is to provide for single-family residential development in this district while respecting the existing character of the neighborhood. This proposal does that. They own several other parcels in the neighborhood, all of them substandard in size. None of them have frontage on any public way, and they all involve wetland. There is some wetland in this area, but it does not affect the particular parcel that we are dealing with here tonight. As I stated earlier, they've got almost a 24,000 square foot lot here, which dwarfs any of the other lots anywhere near this property. And they seek to create these two separate lots. The remaining lot, I should mention, is, meets the zoning ordinance in all respects. So in order to maintain that compliance with zoning, we needed the variances for the other aspects of the lot area, and primarily lot area and lot frontage. I have the petitioners with me tonight, if the board seeks to ask any questions of them. And I also have Chris Mello, our engineer, who prepared the plan. He's available to answer any questions that might come up tonight in his area of expertise.
Okay, I have some concerns. First of all, we have something from a notice from Lucia Del Negro, the Conservation Commission clerk, and she says that your dwelling appears to be in a buffer zone. The wetlands are located off-site at a minimum. She would like you to file a request for determination of applicability with the Conservation Commission before any construction can commence. That's number one. So you do have something that you have to deal with, with the Conservation Commission. Number two, number 16 on your application, what you described as a hardship isn't a hardship, it's just facts. So everything that you wrote here, we can see for ourselves, it's really not a hardship. Number three, on your plot plan, I don't see any driveway delineated at all. I see that where a driveway could be, you have two trees. I don't know what kind of trees, it just says proposed tree. You then have these little star markers, which I don't know what those are. And you made reference to the other lots in that neighborhood that were a little smaller, and that may be true, and it is true. This is new construction, and new construction has to abide by the zoning laws, which require 15,000 square feet. You are asking for 75, 60, which is the sun, the moon, and the stars. So with that being said, I don't know if anybody else has, before we go to the audience, I don't know if anybody else has any questions, but those are a few things that screamed out at me immediately.
Addressed at least a couple of those. If there is wetland in the area, and we don't believe there is, this parcel that we're seeking to create of seven...
Dean, you don't believe there are, but this is from the Conservation Commission.
I was about to say that if, we will certainly happy to file a request for determination of applicability before any building is done. Okay. With respect to a driveway, I know it's not shown on the plan, but whatever the board would like to see with respect to a driveway could be made a condition of any variance, which is granted, and we'd be fine with that. As far as the hardship is concerned, I can't disagree with the chairperson as to what she considers to be a hardship and not a hardship, but this is not unlike many other requests that come before the board. What I think, what we end up with here is something that is twice the size of almost all the other lots in the neighborhood, and I just want to reiterate and emphasize that point. And again, Mr. Mello is here, he can address any questions with respect to the plan itself, if you consider any deficiencies or any other issues that are within his area of expertise.
From the neighbors now. Is there anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, so what I, you may sit, thank you. What I'd like you to do is form a line right behind Carla. Everybody, it's okay. If you raised your hand, we want to hear you now. This is painless. Put your name, you can just write your name and address for the record, so we'll make sure we'll have it. Everybody will have a chance to speak. Carla, do you think we should, should you want to pass it so they can write their name now? Okay. Okay, so as Carla's doing that, you can state your name, put the mic on, and state your name.
My name is Danielle Johansson.
Chris Johansson.
So we just have some concerns. We live at 36 Beacon Boulevard, so across the street. And even though like maybe some of the lots are smaller up the street, like down the end, it definitely is wetlands, and so our house doesn't even have a basement because they said it kept filling up with water. And I guess like there's a stream back there that sometimes fills up, and then the street can flood. So our concern is really like if they mess with the water table and build there, like will we get water?
And the numbers are just so far off from what you actually need, and it's basically trying to crowd an already crowded street.
I'm Candace Ayers. I'm here with Annette Wright. We live at 37 Beacon Boulevard. We have a severe water problem and have for the whole time I've lived there, 26, 27 years. And I have a sump pump that runs every single day of the year. And I've had the foundation fractures, put thousands of dollars into having it stabilized. And just having one more, no matter how small and how well planned, I would be against it under any condition.
Again, I'm opposed because of the flooding. Last summer, we had 3 and 1/2 feet of water in the basement, so that took months to clean up, and we all ended up with sinus infections and to build another house, and then the cul-de-sac is gone because you've got no more. There's a lot of little children that play in the street. I personally don't have a child that young, but there's a lot of little kids that play. That'll be gone. That'll be gone, and the flooding is, the city comes down every single rainstorm and checks that cul-de-sac. And sometimes they have to go down there and do work, and you know, there's right now at least 25 turkeys living there, there's coyotes, there's foxes. They'll all be gone. They'll all be gone. And we have to think about what we do to our environment if you're going to live there for the rest of your life and raise children there. So, thank you.
Maria DeWicky, 35 Beacon Boulevard.
And Rick DeWicky.
I have several issues. One is they are part-time residents. If construction does begin, they won't have to deal with the noise and all the construction work like we do. The lot is half the size of what is allotted by the city. This would be the third house that they have built on, on Beacon Boulevard. I don't find it to be a hardship in any way, shape, or form. If they do want to allow their daughter to live there, I don't understand why she can't move in their house because they're only there in the summertime. Water is a major issue. The water comes right up to our house. I feel as though if the water table is even increased by an inch, the water will start coming into our house. This is a tremendous expense to us because we'll have to start carrying flood insurance and mold insurance. And I understand that my lot is 4,000 square feet, but it was built in 1941, and there was supposed to be no building past my house because it is wetlands, and my neighbor's house does go under 3 feet of water when we get a lot of rain. And I'm also afraid that this is going to create a cascade of development because there is a lot of undeveloped land at the end of the street. I think that's about it. You're welcome.
Hi. My name's Joan Baltisari. I live at 34 Bay State Boulevard, and my property about's the back of the proposed site. May I ask a question? Okay. This variance, if it's awarded, how long do they have to build on this? Really? I was told that they were looking just to do this for maybe five or 10 years down the road should their daughter plan to move. Okay. So this building would be built within the year. All right. My other concern is the water. Their land behind my house, y'all can come on down, is substantially higher than my yard. So when it rains heavily, or when the culver does overflow, and it does overflow, especially if we all remember Mother's Day flood of 2006, I get a lot of water in my backyard. And we have a sump pump running in the ground to mitigate the water out. We also have to run pumps by our back door to keep it from coming in. I don't have a basement. It doesn't go in my basement. It comes in my house. And I'm trying to protect my investment. I work hard all my life. I want to protect my investment. So I have great concerns if a piece of, if a building is now put on top of this property, this great big sponge that is taking up, absorbing some of the water when it rains, or when the snow melts, et cetera, where's it going? It's coming in the 34 Bay State Boulevard is where it's going. And that's my biggest concern. So if for some reason you do approve this, I certainly would like some kind of assurances that there would be something for water mitigation around the property, French drains, something. But, and I understand, you know, all of our houses are on smaller lots, but my house was built in the 1950s, and it's not the 1950s anymore. We know a lot more now than we did then. So, thank you.
Again, Attorney Peter Arvinidis for the petitioners. What I've heard here from the neighbors, to the extent that I could hear everything, really focused on water and water problems. We've considered that aspect of this proposal, and Mr. Mello can address the various solutions that might be necessary. I think first off, we would say that this isn't going to exacerbate the existing situation as bad as it is now. It is what it is. But there are ways that it can be dealt with, and if it pleased the board, I would like to have Mr. Mello have a few things to say about that.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Chris Mello from Easton Land Survey at 104 Lowell Street, and I've been working on and off on... been working on and off on this neighborhood and property for 40 years, and everything that the neighbors say is, is true, and I can't help them with their problems by building or not building on this house. They have issues with cellars, drainage, different types of cellars, and the area itself. It flow, it pitches from Lynn Street towards Lynnfield Street, everything comes to the back. The drainage is essentially a large pipe that runs down Bay State Road, has a ditch that tries to drain all the vacant land and the streets. So that, that being said, the proposal to build a single-family house on this lot, we've looked at it, and there are three things that I can tell you what we had proposed in ourselves with the drainage. One is that the house would not have a cellar, therefore it would not take out the earth, displace that area, and take area that currently absorbs water and allows it to flow through. So no cellar, slab-on-grade footing. We have a proposed house that's about 1,600 odd square feet, and we would have a proposed driveway on the easterly, I'm sorry, the westerly side, closest to the Garland's house, of about 400 square feet. What we would propose to do with the driveway is on a parallel line to it further towards the Garland's house, we would build an infiltration trench and pitch that driveway towards it. That trench would be essentially two foot by two foot square broken stone with a perforated pipe in it to take the increase in water from the driveway. The roof itself being about 1,600 square feet, we would take that through a downspout, gutter, and pipe system to the rear yard and build series infiltration chambers, which you've probably seen on jobs, the common term is cultech. They're half-round, they're usually yellow, they're set on a bed of stone, they have a percolation factor that allows the water to dissipate, and they also have a storage factor in the half domes. So we feel that we can alleviate our increase in stormwater and not cause any additional runoff in the neighborhood. The neighborhood will still do what it does, and I can't say anything about that except it does happen, and I don't disagree with any of the people that spoke. I'd be happy to answer any questions about how that system might work, or anything else that you might have in the area. Very good, thank you for your time.
Candace Sias, 37 Beacon Boulevard. There is no house on that lot today. The problem is groundwater, it's not just runoff. The water table is so high there that it doesn't take anything to make it rise up, and there are springs all along Beacon Boulevard, and no doubt Bay State also. There is no house there today. My sump pump is running, it was running when I left to come here. So they can French drain it and swale it and bring it to the culvert all they want, but it's going to destroy my property, and that's a fact, and I truly believe it. Thank you.
So there's no doubt in my mind that there is a huge water problem, and that's not, that's not to be taken lightly. My other major concern in addition to the flooding is that it is required by the zoning laws to have 15,000 square feet, and as I said in the beginning, you are asking for half of that, and that is, in my estimation, too much to ask for at this point in time. It just, we're really going against all our zoning laws, so at this point, if there's no other questions or comments, the matter is before the board.
I guess I would just add one comment to that. That it's, it's obviously a bizarrely long lot, but given that, there's ample space to add on in addition to this, to this dwelling, that I think would solve this problem, and as we've always said, whenever this issue comes before the board, that this is a temporary solution to a permanent problem that, yes, it's family and family now, but it won't always be family and family, and now we've crammed a lot in, so that, that's a concern of mine. Naturally, hearing some of these concerns, I guess the petitioner would have a decision to make, pursue, not pursue, but we'll leave that up to your attorney.
Mrs. Lowes, you make a good point about an addition, that's not something they've been considering. They wanted to have a separate dwelling, but it's certainly something they consider in the future if necessary.
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve?
Roll call vote.
No. No.
Steven?
No.
No. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
A motion to accept the last meeting's minutes. Motion to adjourn?
It was denied. As everybody's holding their breath, it was denied.